Are we ready?
Hi, good evening. If we can stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. First item on the list is report of the chairman. And for those in the public and those viewing at home, you probably don't know. So I just wanted to make mention that Darrell Trump, our chairman of the Board of Education, between last meeting and last Sunday, has resigned. Mr. Trump has accepted a new position out of state about almost two weeks ago. And he sold his house and he has moved. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank him for his years of service. Unfortunately, because it was such a quick move, we did not get the opportunity to recognize him here at a Board of Ed meeting, which we would normally do to thank him. And he did indicate that he would not be back here. So we're just going to have to do it. And hopefully that maybe his wife will pass that on if she's happening to watch. But, you know, we wanted to thank him for his tenure as the Board of Ed chairman and also as a member of the Board of Education. We have accomplished a lot of things under his tenure and moved the district in a great direction. And we wish him and Debbie the best of luck in this new adventure that they're on in a different state. If anybody else has anything to say, please feel free.
Does he get the ceremonial post?
I guess we'd have to send it to him once we find an address to send it to him.
We could certainly do something.
Maybe he can do a selfie and send it to us. And we'll post it on Facebook.
All right. Anybody else?
I'd like to say something. I've been on the board now, this is my fourth year. And Darrell was a great mentor when I first came on. He was very helpful in guiding me and explaining to me how things went. And just so, you know, it can be a little confusing in the beginning as a Board of Ed member coming off of town council. So, and he was always really easy to talk to. And I appreciate everything he did for me in the Board of Education for the town of Monroe.
Absolutely. Yes, Lee.
And I will say that his calm demeanor and his patience was much appreciated. He had a great ability to keep a very peaceful tenure even while, you know, there might be have been some contention or some, some issues that we were, you know, dwelling on. So we will miss him. Wish him all the best.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We will move on to exemplary people and Jim will lead this.
We will just relocate over here for a second. Please come up. Please come up. Tonight, we're recognizing as exemplary people Ed Butler. Ed Butler, I first knew Ed while I was in another district many years ago, probably in the mid 1990s, well, my involvement with the SWC.
Right.
And seeing Ed running around all the time with a smiling face and running from one activity to another. He's had a long career in education. He spent two years as an art teacher in Meriden and then 15 years in Stratford and then 18 years here at Monroe. He began his coaching career. Hear what I say? Okay. Has assisted track coach at Pinell High School in 1966. So from 1966 to 1973, he was there. Then he was head coach, then he was head cross-country coach, then he was assistant football coach here at Massey alone. His accomplishments and his coaching experiences. 1976 to 1978, assistant football coach. 1979 to 1982, head football coach. 1983 to 1993, head cross-country coach. 1977 and 1978, assistant indoor track. 1979 to present, head indoor coach. 1977 and 78, assistant boys track. 1979 to 1981, head boys track. 1984 to present, head girls track. I mean, how do you do all? It even gets, it even gets a little bit better because we recently came across two emails that I would like to read to you. They're very short emails from former students of Ed's that will attest to the impact that he has had on the children of Monroe. Former Massey captain and current Yale women's track and field captain Amanda Snyder shares, "Coach Butler once told me, 'Life is all about the journey and the journey is all about your companions.' By virtue of his compassion and loyalty, Coach Butler is exactly the kind of companion that makes the life journey so wonderful for those around him. I would say his coaching style is consistent with a lesser-known about but enthusiastic approach to gardening. Much like his beloved tomato plants, under his care and attention, athletes can and will learn to thrive in even the most challenging of environments, both near and far from any athletic field or track." And then from Kenzie McFarland, "I just wanted to let you know, this is to Ed, that I have been accepted to Connecticut College and will be running track for them. None of this have been, would have been possible without you and I'm so blessed to have you as my coach. Thank you for teaching me how to run and how to be a leader and a team player. I could not ask for a better coach and person to spend two seasons a year with. You've made track such an important part of my life and I can't thank you enough for it. I could hardly wait for outdoor track." The impact that people like Ed have on our students is not just about what happens in the classroom. It's about all those human things that happen and those interactions between students and adults in our environment here. And I can't think of a better exemplary person to recognize tonight than Ed Butler. Mark, you want to share a couple more comments?
I do. I, I'm happy that I get to be the person to introduce Ed this evening. I do want to say that Joe Cobza extends his congratulations. He's, of course, at home taking good care of his family right now, I'm sure. But, you know, he wanted to extend his congratulations and we welcome you as well, Chris, to be with us this evening. So thank you. I am personally very pleased to have this honor of introducing Ed tonight. When I was a student here many years ago, Coach Butler was actually the advisor of the set construction and stage crew here at Massey. And I remember many fun-filled afternoons and late evenings working with Ed to create truly awesome scenery for the musical and dramatic productions here at Massey. Among other things, we built many amazing things like a working merry-go-round for Carousel, realistic train car for Harold Hill in The Music Man, and castles and parapets for the Knights of the Round Table in Camelot. So for me, working with Coach Butler was endless fun and endless learning. So thank you for that, Coach. John DiGennaro has a few things that he asked that I would, I would share as well. Recognition for Ed is always very appreciated for those who know him as he is truly a humble man who, unless you dig, will not openly share his many accomplishments as a coach, nor how he has positively influenced the lives, the lives that he has touched during the 50 years that he has taught and mentored student athletes in this area. Ed would never openly share that he had been a head coach during 87 different athletic seasons in five different sports, has won 14 league championships, and has won Coach of the Year honors in three different sports. He will, however, speak proudly about the athletic life and accomplishments of his current and former students. Innately, Ed understands that in order to get the best out of student athletes, they need to know you care more about them as people than as athletes. Although highly respected as a coach by his athletes, without question, Ed's athletes reciprocate those feelings and care much more about him as a person. This past winter, Massey's indoor track team enjoyed another successful season under Coach Butler's guidance. It was highlighted by junior Joe DiMartino earning an all-New England honors with a school-record high jump of six foot three inches. This is just one of the many examples, some highlighted by Mr. Augustine just now, of how students flourish under Coach Butler's guidance. So congratulations, Coach, and thank you for being an inspiration to thousands of Massey students, past and present.
Ed, if you'd like to say something, feel free.
Well, I, I was going to scare everybody and bring a folder. Because many of you know about my speech making. I left the folder at home. But I brought two hats. I always wear a hat, a cap at track meets. And this is an old tattered yellow cap that parents told me a long time ago I had to wear because that's the only way they could find me at an indoor track meet. So the hats, and, but I, going into my more sedate times, I've bought a darker hat. Thank you very much. I appreciate all those kind words and I appreciate all the years that people have let me do what I do.
Thank you, Ed.
It's, you start adding things up and I, oh my God, it's been 20 years since I taught here. Thank you for letting me hang in.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can move on then to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to the second?
Thank you. Second? Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Gutman, a second by Ms. Crouch. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. We will move on to our reports of committee and liaisons. And first up is our student board representative.
Well, hello. As you can see, I'm alone tonight. Kristin and Matt are actually at the post-prom fashion show rehearsal, or and Mike are at the post-prom fashion show rehearsal. And the actual post-prom fashion show is on this Wednesday night at seven o'clock. Last Friday night, Friday the 13th, was the sophomores' ring dance and it went very smoothly. And this week, there's a ton going on. I have much to say. But cap testing starts tomorrow for the sophomores. And on Tuesday and Thursday, they will be taking only the science portion of the cap because that's all that's left. They only take the science and that will happen in the morning. And while they're taking it, while the sophomores are taking their cap, the juniors are going to come in. And tomorrow, there's a capstone presentation for the juniors so they can start thinking about what they're going to do. So I have to start thinking about capstone. And also tomorrow night, there's a meeting for the juniors on the capstone as well. Last weekend, three Massey robotics teams qualified for the world championships in Kentucky over April break. And there will be teams from Japan and Europe and all over the U.S. competing there. And also, on Pi Day, so March 14th, this past Saturday, there was the Pi Day 5K, which was a great success and had about 150 runners running in it, which was great for the first year of having it. Also, the Massey School Drama, The Great Gatsby, will be in, or starts on Friday, the 27th, and will play on the 28th as well. And we'll have three showings. And there will be an in-school preview for The Great Gatsby next Tuesday. Also, on the 27th and 28th, there's the Da Vinci Festival, which is a K through 12 district-wide art show. And it displays all the art and technology throughout Massey. And all of the students from anywhere in the school district can come and look through everything that we've accomplished in the past year. And lastly, tomorrow night, the hockey team will be playing in the state semifinals at the Yale Whale. And if they win, they will be playing in the state finals sometime this Saturday. So we're really rooting for them to win tomorrow.
This is their third time?
Third time making it to the semifinals. But they've never made it to the finals, so hopefully this year, they can pull it off. So, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Ad hoc committee?
Ad hoc met last Tuesday evening. We are spending a significant amount of time on the data that was presented by the, by the study from Fletcher Thompson and from McGroom, Malane and McGroom on the demographic side. One of the things that we have been working on is the original study did a lot of the analysis based on square footage. We're converting the square footage to an analysis of that with the, the actual classroom spaces and trying to make the classroom spaces objectively identifying the quality of those spaces, okay? And so we worked through the two A8 scenarios, the B scenario and the C scenario. At the next meeting, we will complete all of the scenarios and then begin T-charting the pros and cons of each of the various solutions that are in front of us. So our work is really, we are really in the thick of the work right now. It's, it's interesting. It's engaging. And, you know, over the next couple of meetings, we should have some, start to formulate some opinions about what the solutions might be as our enrollment continues to decline and where we need to be eight years from now. So we'll keep you posted.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions on that, Lee?
No.
No. George?
Will we see his key dates or timeframes?
I'm reluctant, yeah, I'm reluctant, George, to commit to some timelines because we, we've lost a little bit of time. We, we thought that the, the study was going to be completed by December. There was still some work that needed to be finished up well into February. So what I was thinking, you know, we would be completely done by June. I'm now thinking that we may have to go until September. But I, I just don't know how long it's going to take to go through each of the scenarios and really give it the full attention that it needs. So, you know, I, I'm thinking at the very latest, early fall, that we should be completed.
Anybody else? All right. Anybody for public participation? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The communications committee met tonight and I want to thank John Batista. We wanted to look at giving everyone a summary of our Facebook listings and postings. So I'd like to give you some of the highlights. We looked at, we looked at all of the activity from October 10th of last year to March 3rd of this year. And we had 105 postings during that time. 14 were around student recognition, 12 around student activity, 49 school and district activity, five related to Board of Ed presentations, seven related to school and staff recognition, and district messaging overall, 18. So the, it's very interesting also to look at the demographics of our Facebook users. 81% are women and 18% are men. And even more interesting, we have, in terms of fans, 693 from the United States. And we also have one from Puerto Rico, Canada, Turkey, the United Kingdom, and Saudi Arabia. So I guess we're really global in that regard. But I, you know, I'd like, I think everyone has been trained staff-wise in the district and everyone is contributing photos to John and then we're posting them. And we, we, it's, it's growing and giving us a very good presence on Facebook. The committee also talked about alternate social media channels that we might want to look at. And going forward, we're going to look at the possibility of Twitter and doing tweets from, you know, probably the high school in terms of athletics, activities, even some district messaging and that sort of thing. So more to come. One other thing that we talked about in regards to communications over the past several years, and I think it's important to, to start from the standpoint of our televised meetings have been a tremendous resource in terms of communications. But we've also, that combined with the school messenger, Jim's newsletters, and Facebook are all providing a pretty firm foundation for people to understand totally what's going on in the district. So we just can keep improving on that.
Are we going to get anything out in the next couple of weeks regarding the first budget vote on the 7th? Did you guys talk about that?
We can, you know, that would be a perfect, a perfect animal for tweeting. But, I mean, we can certainly, yeah, we can do that and do that through all of these, these items of school messenger.
We're restricted in, in the messaging that we can do.
Just vote to vote.
To, you know, date, time, and place of the vote. And that's pretty much it.
What about our Facebook? Are we restricted there too?
I think if we...
Yeah, you, we're restricted on any, any, any vehicle or medium that we communicate with that is funded by, by the Board of Education, by the taxpayers of the town of Monroe are restricted.
Isn't it true, though, that you're, I mean, you're a lot more free to say things regarding the numbers and the trending before the final number is voted on by the Board of Finance? Is that this week? Is that Wednesday?
Anything, yeah, I'm not sure if the Board of Finance is meeting tonight or Wednesday.
I think tonight is their workshop. And I believe Wednesday is their regular meeting.
Anything that can be perceived as demonstrating, you know, a pro or con position would be construed unfavorably.
But could you go on Facebook and just say, just a reminder that the budget vote?
Yes.
Is X date polls are open from six to eight.
And I think in the past, we've done a school messenger.
And we've also done a Board of Ed letter too. To the papers and patch, I think. If we want to do that again. And can we put that on Facebook or no? That would not be allowed, okay?
That would be taken in position.
No, because we're talking in favor.
Okay. Mark, did you?
I don't tweet very much, but I am signed up for about 10 people that do Twitter and Jim is one of them. And we do get tweets already from Jim. I don't know if you were aware.
Well, it's, we are, but it's not, it hasn't been a, you know, it hasn't been a strategic message.
So there'd be a lot more?
Yeah. And we, you know, we were thinking that, for example, the, you know, the hockey team is, is playing tomorrow night, you know, something, stuff like that. You know, just, oh, what the result of the hockey outcome is.
That'd be good.
And, you know, graduation dates for this year. And, you know, just facts that you, people may miss or they just need to be reminded of.
Up until now, well, because of the limitation, the number of characters, it often just refers you to the website for an announcement. Go read it there, you know? And we could, we could be more strategic about it.
Anybody else on committees? I'm sorry, Alan?
Curriculum committee, Matt. And we went over some course offerings, including an algebra course. I have the book right here. Pass it around. This course is going to provide, obviously, what we're gearing towards is inquiry-based thinking skills. There's an online component for parents. It's obviously aligned to the Common Core state standards. It's good for differentiating instruction, uses real-world activities, incorporates reading and writing. And there's like online texts and videos. Price of the book is $91 and total cost will come to around $11,700. And that money's already been budgeted for. So it's not, you know, something we'd have to vote on. It's already included. And there's also some offerings for English, a couple new English classes that sound pretty interesting. One is called Film and Literature. And in that class, they're going to analyze text and analyze films. And they're going to look at movies like, like Rear Window by Alfred Hitchcock, look at various aspects of movies, how rear windows, several movies within a movie. There's tons of stuff to analyze in that. More Martin Scorsese's movie Hugo, they're going to take a look at. Movie's about a little boy who meets a retired silent film director. It's very clever, actually. Another course is, another English course is Modern Drama. And they're going to read some hyper-dramatic stories like Cat on a Hot Tin Roof, Who's Afraid of Virginia Woolf, which you can't get any more dramatic than that. Another course is going to be called Monsters and Madness, which is going to look at horror literature. It's going to basically span from Gothic Victorian England through contemporary American horror. What they're going to look at is like psychology, mostly in literature. So your, the students will read Beowulf, Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde, they'll look at some Edgar Allan Poe stories and maybe like Stephen King, some short stories by Stephen King. Another course, The Modern Hero. And they're going to, that course is going to analyze what it means to be a hero in modern society. They're going to use novels, biographies, scholarly articles, college-level texts. And the students are going to be required to do personal narratives, literary analysis, research papers, and response journals. And a lot of the Modern Hero class is going to be sports, some of it's going to be sports-oriented. And the final English class is going to be war literature. And it's going to cover civil war all the way up to the Middle East. And it's going to explore various themes and concepts of war, effects of war on families, victims of war. They're going to read books, some classic books like The Killer Angels, Unbroken, Glory, and Lone Survivor. I have some of the books here. So there's some, some pretty exciting courses are going to be offered.
Mayor Crowley is here this evening. And I know this is not in the sequence because it would come under the first review. But I think, given the detail here, Mike, could you just offer the context of this? Because it's in, it's all in the grade 12. Yeah, come on up.
What we did is we put together a list of like 25 courses. And two years ago, we made the juniors and seniors take that as a survey and say, which courses would you take? And we took the top five and we worked on them as a department over the last two years. So a lot of the courses, we wanted to give them the experience, that sort of that college course, that thematic college course. So these are semester-level courses at the college prep level that provide a lot more modern pieces for them to work with. So that's sort of the context with it. You know, just some of the clarification is, as we looked through all these courses, we really definitely used the kind of core standards to make our decisions as far as assessment and the materials being used. So if you look through the documents, you'll notice that. And like the film and literature course, I don't want it to be put out there that it's a film course. It's film and literature. And one of the things we really want to do is, we do pair text. And we talk a lot about paired text now when we talk about curriculum. So when we look at Rear Window, we look at the cinematography of Rear Window. But then we look at point of view in Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime. So the idea is, how does a filmmaker use point of view? And then how does a, how does a writer use point of view? So there's definitely, there's that, the balance of it. Because we didn't want to go truly with just a film course because then it's, oh, look, we're just watching movies. So they do that very well on their own. So we're using it as sort of instructional tool to get them to access a little bit more difficult texts also. So that's...
And Mike will be here when we get to the first review if anyone has any questions. But the movement, we have been doing the movement steadily for several years. And this is very exciting stuff that's happening.
Yes.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. We will move on to public participation. If anybody from the audience would like to come up and speak. All right. Hearing none, then we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Gabby, if you would lead the way for the fund activity statement?
Right. If you all look at page 22, you'll see that our medical insurance reserve fund is quite healthy right about now. It's $2.3 million. Please don't forget that around this time of year is when a lot of people have begun to max out on their HSAs. So we'll probably start to see a decline in the reserve balance as more and more of the medical cost falls upon the board as opposed to, onto our staff members. So, but, you know, we're in negotiations with Ovations, who's our broker, already regarding renewals of our, of the premiums. So that'll be coming up in the next two months or so. So I can't guarantee that we're going to end at $2.3 million, but it's, it's looking very healthy now. Just very quickly, we've asked all staff to close any open purchase orders by the end of the month. This is not our blanket POs for things like electricity or water or maintenance or things like that. These are the POs that people may have opened thinking that they would be buying, I don't know, something that maybe they don't need any longer, maybe they've managed to purchase already. So we're just asking them to tidy up just so we can start our year-end closing process. And we're going to be encumbering salaries this week, so that should give us a better idea of how that process works in Munis because it's quite cumbersome and time-consuming. And as you know, we met with the Board of Finance last week and that was a relatively quiet meeting. That's pretty much where we are.
Does anybody have any questions for Gabby on any of that? Does anybody have any questions for Gabby on any of that?
I'd like to talk a little bit about the budget update. We did meet with Board of Finance last week. And the process is evolving, okay? We anticipate that the Board of Finance will be concluding their workshop this week and finalizing their recommendation for what to go forward with as a percentage increase. We do, we do anticipate that the Board would want to cut both the Donald side and the Board of Education side a bit, okay? That's why we're having conversations about the Medical Reserve Fund and, and other areas of the budget where we might experience some, some savings. And so until we hear exactly what the Board of Finance is, is going to do, we won't make any adjustments in the budget, but come to the Board of Education. I think last year, what we did was, whatever the, whatever the recommended budget amount that went out to the public, we waited until we had a successful referendum and then we did our internal balancing from that point on, okay? And then accepted a new adjusted budget sometime in May or June of last year. So that going forward, we could always reference back to what the actual adjusted budget was. So that looks like the plan for this year as well.
Did we set parameters for the medical reserve that it had to fall within?
Yes.
And were it within those?
We're actually on the, on the top end of those right now, maybe even over that a little bit.
So they wouldn't look to lower it below the parameters that were chosen?
Oh, no.
Correct.
No, no, we wouldn't want to do that. And, and it's a tricky thing in how, if, if a decision comes to adjust the Medical Reserve Fund, it's not like you go in and you take money out of the Medical Reserve Fund. We really can't do that. What we can do is adjust it by our contributions to the fund next year, okay? Now, we don't own all of those funds, okay? Our employees own some of those funds, okay? And so consequently, if we want to extract, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars over the course of a year, the employees' contributions are equal about twenty percent of that. So we want to share that responsibility, you know, or, or that benefit to the employees as well, okay? So if we're going to reduce our contribution, we're going to ask them to reduce their contribution as well, okay? So that's how that would play out.
So then, just to clarify, the Board of Finance may recommend where we would make cuts, but it's you and the nine of us that will determine what cuts are made to the budget. They're not going to say, you have to cut from this line item. So I think that's important for people to keep in mind.
They're very keen on where, you know, where they see the, the spots that, you know, likely could be adjusted. And we've never, you know, we've never hidden the fact that, you know, when we go out for our budget, when we start the budget process in October, we are a long way from knowing some of these numbers and that it's a guess. And it's our best guess at the time, but over the five or six months till we get to referendum, you may experience, okay, you know, maybe we can move this and adjust that. And so, you know, it, it's pretty obvious if there are, if there is any movement, where those things would be in, in the budget.
Did you have any, when you went there last week, did you have any sense, you said, you know, the medical reserve is one area that you're looking at? Were there other areas that were questioned that became obvious during the course of discussion?
I mean, not so much that they were targeted areas or that they were looking there for savings, but, you know, some questions came up about energy costs and clarification on why energy costs are going up so much. And, you know, the utility, the, the electricity costs obviously were a big component of that. Gabby, what were some of the other questions? One of them had to do with, I'm sorry, I haven't.
I know. We talked a lot about the utilities, we talked about the medical reserve. We talked about, you know, teacher retirements and they were just, they, they just wanted us to reemphasize that retirements were already budgeted into the budget as opposed to, oh, maybe we could find some wiggle room there. We talked about the math curriculum.
Right. We, we have a math curriculum meeting on Thursday of this week. And we're getting close to, you know, making a decision. If you remember, there were two programs that we were piloting. The, the, one of the programs is about an eighty thousand dollar program and one is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar program. I, you know, I mean, the feeling I have is that people really like the hundred and twenty thousand dollar one so far. Sheila, am I right? I'm right, okay? So I don't see any wiggle room there. I would be reluctant to do anything until the committee makes its final decision on the math curriculum. Okay?
Anybody else? All right.
The question, if I might add to, the questions were few and far between, okay? There were just a couple clarification questions. I think that, I think it's fair to say that the Board of Finance was very pleased with the transparency of the budget, right? Gabby, John, you would have just both agree, right?
Yep.
On that, so, I mean, you know, I saw it as a, as a good opportunity to meet and talk.
We will move on to presentations and professional development. And first up is the Regional Crisis Team, Matt Curry, who's the Guidance Counselor, is going to do that presentation.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Matt to join us up here, but I'd also like to ask Kay Moser to come up and let me give you the backdrop on this regional effort here on the crisis team. About a year ago, the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Group, we meet on a monthly basis. And we had a, a speaker from Westcon who came and talked to us about the formation of a regional crisis team. Really came out of the need that they saw in the Sandy Hook response, okay? And that we could marshal tremendous resources if, if all of the districts could get together and get trained properly. We could marshal very significant resources for a district in need very, very quickly, okay? I think that proved out very quickly in one of our districts last year where we had the, a death of a teacher, very unexpected, et cetera. And we were able to respond as a region and it worked out beautifully. What I am really pleased to say is that Monroe has really taken a leadership role in this regional crisis team in the form that Matt is really working very closely with Westcon and coming up with the agendas and doing a lot of the work that is required to make this kind of thing happen. So Matt, if you would, give us a, an overview and.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you. Yeah, I got it right here. Sorry. So I just want to give you a little bit of an overview of some of the things that have been going on for the last year. This crisis team really started meeting in terms of staff members from multiple districts around April of last year. So in the spring, we're just about on a one-year anniversary almost. I'm going to try to hit the high points and not bore you with a lot of, a lot of kind of theory and background. Why plan for crises? I think these are things that we can all support and get behind. Safety's first and when our students don't feel safe, they have a very hard time learning. In addition, there's many laws that compel us to prepare and respond to crises within a school environment. One, Public Act thirteen one seventy-eight, I find very interesting because if you look at the fourth bullet point at the bottom, it requires formal collaboration between schools and community. That statement's a little bit vague in terms of, within Monroe, we are the town of Monroe, our community is Monroe, but we are also part of Fairfield County. So Fairfield County is also a larger part of the community. And I think everybody saw that in the response to Sandy Hook. They weren't alone in what they went through. Everyone in the region came together to try to help out in the best way that they can. So Dr. Lomis was originally from Texas and had moved to Connecticut for a job at Westcon. And with being in different parts of the country, you get many different experiences in crisis response. And so Texas has very large school districts. And the way that their school districts respond to crises is a team model. And generally, the team that responds to a large crises is not from within the school that that crisis is based. And that's for a few different reasons that I can get to in a little bit. But you can see that Virginia, Colorado, Florida, California, and even Putnam, Westchester, their BOCES has a crisis response team and they all use this model purported by an organization called NOVA. NOVA stands for the National Organization for Victims Assistance. Don't feel bad if you don't recognize the name or the organization. They actually go out of their way not to advertise their services. They want to focus on crisis response and delivering services to people in need instead of self-promotion. So you can see, it's a long-established group. They were at nine eleven, they were at Columbine, they responded to Katrina, most recently at Sandy Hook. Their, their main model is a group-based intervention that also works as a mental health triage. So with all of this in mind, all these different districts got together and decided like, let's take a look and see what we can do to come together to support each other if a crisis does come up. Obviously, we want to prevent crises. Many cannot be prevented and we are, we have to respond. There's universal traits to all of them, yet every crisis is unique and idiosyncratic in its own way and requires an in-kind response. And overall, we are a school-based, we're school-based organizations. Our job is to get the learning environment back to where it was before the crisis to the best of our ability. Crisis will always cause change in the end, but we want to make sure that our students get back into the classroom so that they can learn and move on. One of the biggest things to think about for me, which came from Dr. Lomis's experience, are these ideas of counter-transference and mutual aid. So our best practice does tell us that we shouldn't respond to our own mental health crises. If there's a crisis within our own school to, with a certain severity, it can affect us as helping professionals. If we're going through our own crises, then we need to focus on helping ourselves and accept the help of others to help the people around us. It would also be helpful in a lot of ways to have over, kind of overriding principles and guides for crisis response for the community at large. And by that, I mean these school districts within Fairfield County. For example, policies on memorials, the use of mobile crisis, how each district uses it in different ways. So these are all the different regions that have been involved. Currently, we meet once a month at Western Connecticut State University. We have different topics that are on the docket every month. Usually, we have guest speakers and presenters come in to give us information on a variety of topics. But the foremost, the, the foremost topic on the agenda is any crisis that may have come up within the last month in any region. So this is a little bit of a timeline of what we've done. You can see that this all started way back in February of last year. Around April of last year is when different types of helping professionals really started to get together to make a plan of, of forming a group and potentially starting this organization of helping professionals that can respond in kinds to crises within different school districts. We were very, very, very fortunate to have received a anonymous donation of seven thousand dollars to fund NOVA, the National Organization for Victims Assistance, to come in and train fifty helping professionals within our very school districts. I was able to go to that training. Deborah Kavachi, principal over at Monroe L., was able to attend it as well as Tracy Sacco, one of our school counselors in the elementary schools. We weren't actually sure, we, we had the, the training scheduled and we're almost on the verge of canceling it because we didn't have enough money to, to fund that up until a few weeks before it happened. There have been some meetings over the summer to, to develop a meeting schedule. And as Mr. Augustine has said, in December of this year, so just before the new year, in Bethel, there was a very unexpected and tragic death of one of the educators in one of their schools. Long-standing teacher, very well-loved. Obviously, it affected the students within that teacher's classroom, but also every student in the district that has had that teacher in the past, as well as all of the staff members within that school. So we were able to deploy about ten members of the crisis team to Bethel to support their staff and students using that NOVA model. We got to use the training that we had. And it worked out very well. We've debriefed it a couple times because it was our first response, so we spent a little bit more time talking about it. But our feedback has been very positive. These are some of the meeting topics that we've had over the course of the year and some of the planned topics for, for the rest of the year. You can see the next meeting's scheduled for tomorrow and they're looking at school police partnerships. So where do we want to go from here? We're trying to follow a best practice model. So we want to keep these regular trainings, so our monthly meetings, but also try to continue to incorporate larger trainings and refresher trainings. So updating our NOVA training, potentially trying to do another large-scale NOVA training to train more helpers within the school districts so that we have more individuals available to respond if necessary. Debriefing crisis events, really looking at mutual aid and what mutual aid looks like between different school districts. Coming up with a protocol and a resource manual that we could post online regarding best practices. Putnam, Westchester BOCES, their regional crisis team has a wonderful website. And they are very, very willing to share. Anybody who would like to, to just kind of Google search them, you can come up with a lot of resources. Looking at the incident, incident command structure for schools. According, according to No Child Left Behind, schools are supposed to adopt the National Incident Management Response System for responding to, to crises. I mean, that's something that a lot of districts have identified as an area of professional development that they would like. Training and threat, threat assessment and quite a bit more. So I know I've just covered a lot. I really thank you for your time. This is just my info. I work as a school psychologist at Jockey Hollow, mostly with the sixth graders, but I'm there for everyone. And I'm also up here as the Student Assistance Counselor at Massacre High School a couple days a week. I also want to thank Kay for letting me participate in this. It's not easy to let one of your school psychologists, once a month, kind of go, go to these meetings and bring back a lot of grand ideas that I'd like to try to implement in different ways throughout our district. But I think it's really helpful and it's been beneficial to other districts in the past.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions?
Great presentation and I'm glad to hear that there is a resource like that. Is the goal to have this be a bigger team ultimately? With more people trained and more people available to be deployed in situations?
Absolutely, yeah. Currently, we do try to limit the monthly meetings that we have to two, maybe three people from each school district to attend. That has to do more with the physical meeting space that we have. Westcon has been very, very giving with their space, time and, and some funding. Every now and then, we get snacks, which is a big deal for us. But the overall philosophy is using the NOVA model. It kind of acts as a vetting process for the different school districts. One of the responses that came out of the Sandy Hook incident is that there was a lot of people who wanted to help. But it was very difficult for people to figure out who's following best practices, who can, you know, recommend them, who could, who could write a letter of recommendation? And what would their overall commitment be to that response? And what's their understanding of schools and the school environment? School systems are very unique systems. It's one of the reasons why I work in them, because I like them so much. But working with mental health issues in the public schools is different than an outpatient facility. It's different than a hospital, it's different than a residential treatment facility. Each school and district has its own culture. And by meeting with all of these people, coming up with one. up with one specific model that we've decided is a best practice and that we'd like to use in response to crises, makes that vetting process easier and makes it easier for people to accept them into their school. So the more people that we can get involved and trained in that model, absolutely the better.
Mark?
Do you have people that are outside the current employment in your group, somebody like Dave York, who has both NIM certification and CISD facilitator experience?
So, one of the things that we did was have Mike Salet, who is, he's NIM certified and he works exclusively, not exclusively, but he works mostly with the Putnam, Westchester BOSIs group. He came in and did a very brief table talk in terms of an incident response situation with us. We're looking to bring him back more. When we did do the NOVA training, there were a few community practitioners, people who were either psychologists or counselors within the local community who joined us as well because they were able to get their own funding to, to join our group. Again, the, the fourth bullet point on that, that public act is school and community partnerships. We're not trying to be 100% limiting in terms of, these are only school helping professionals. Generally, I think that helping professionals within the school are going to be more available to respond to those crises, but it's also good to have those partners within the community to help out.
I, I think, I, I might add this and, and I might be wrong. So just clarify if I'm, if I'm wrong. If you, if you think of a, a crisis response, you, you have the mechanical, the NIMs training component, and then you have the mental health component. They're really two separate things that are going on, okay, for the most part. I mean, the immediate management of a, of a, a thing like Sandy Hook, for instance, you know, this team is not going to be immediately involved. It's going to be taken over by, you know, all the others, okay? And then this team would come in and assist the district, okay? So there, there's that slight distinction there with the nature of the crisis.
I think part of the feedback from Sandy Hook was that although the state people were very helpful at the beginning, as the school year was trying to get started back up with the kids getting back in routine, it was more difficult for those people to understand the school piece of it. So I think that was a feedback from Sandy Hook when that originally happened, is that they knew, they knew a lot about the mental health, but they didn't necessarily know about the school component of kids having difficulty at the same time.
You know, I will tell you that the, the NOVA training, for instance, is a very costly training. You know, by regionalizing our efforts like this, we save literally tens of thousands of dollars and get more people trained much more efficiently. So it's been, it's been really great. And, you know, in typical Monroe fashion, okay, when you ask people like Kay and Matt to jump in and to become a part of a team, they jump in with both feet and do an excellent job at what they're doing. And I'd like to just thank them for making, you know, this all possible because they, they are a bit of the energy that's making the whole team possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. This sounds like a great initiative, but I noticed not a lot of Fairfield County towns on the list as participating. Are you trying to recruit more of them into it? Because it seems like, it seems like more northeast of us.
Yeah, this has been, and, and let me take a minute to explain that. We belong to two separate groups, superintendents groups. We belong to the Fairfield County, Southern Fairfield County group, you know, through SES as our, as our main.
Regional.
Regional Resource Center, okay? I'm sorry. But because of our proximity to Litchfield County, okay, and to the Western Connecticut section, we also participate in Ed Connection, which is the, the RSC for Litchfield County and Western Connecticut. And so I go to two meetings every month. I go to a Southern Fairfield County Superintendent's Association to maintain contact with SES and with those communities, and then to the Western group as well. So this initiative really stemmed from WestCon through Ed Connection, okay? So it's, it's really been a Western Connecticut Superintendent's Group committee.
And are they trying to do something in Southern or not?
Not to my knowledge, yet. Okay, I mean, that's something that we should talk about, clearly.
Because you think they want to get in on this initiative too?
Yeah.
Because possibly there could be stuff that this group is going to need to go out to that, you know, Fairfield County to help.
So that might be an agenda item, since Matt is in charge of the agendas. Maybe we can get you to talk about reaching out to the, to the Southern Fairfield County group.
One of our meetings coming up, we're looking at what we're going to do over the summer and how we're going to plan for next year. So that will definitely be on the, on the docket.
Well, I would think just even making a presentation like this to that superintendent's group.
Yeah.
Would be very educational and might get people thinking about, and, and talking about the success you had in Bethel.
That's a great idea. Anybody have any else, anything else for this? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to Finnish lessons.
Finnish lessons. Finnish lessons, as you recall, we've got copies of this for everybody and.
I read.
I don't know how much time to spend with this this evening. We still have a bit of agenda to do. But I, I did want to offer the opportunity for anyone who has, you know, participated so far to, to offer any input. But I, I would like to comment on a, on a couple of things. I think in the introduction to this, I had indicated that I first became aware of Posi Solberg back in Boston a couple of years ago, and then this past fall, he was the keynote speaker. Amy and Jeff were there at the Cave Caps Convention where, you know, in essence, he, he outlined all of the content of this book or the, the concept of this book. The book offers a lot of the data to support the concept, okay? And the concept is that Finland is not participating in this standardization movement and high-stakes testing, okay, that, you know, some countries like the United States are engaged in. What they have done instead is they have invested very, very heavily in creating teachers of very high caliber, okay? They pay them well. They have emphasized social equity, okay, in terms of preschool experiences. You know, I, I know this may not play 100%, but they, they have looked very, he has, Finland has looked very, very closely at making equitable access to healthcare, okay, to maternity leave and preschool experiences that we in this country have not done, okay? The gap, the current gap, I think the contention in this book so far is that the, the achievement gap that we're experiencing in the United States is not so much an achievement gap as it is a socioeconomic gap, okay? And that until we address that gap and we begin to look at the poor experiences that some of the less affluent people in our country have to preschool experiences, until we're really willing to do that, it's going to be very hard to swim out of the, the achievement gap that we do have, okay? I had a, a very fortunate opportunity this morning to speak to a graduate. I spent about an hour with a graduate of Massacre from last year. He's doing a research project at his college. And we were talking about this and, you know, I said to him, you know, he was, he actually brought up the concept of, you know, the disparity that exists in our city school systems versus places like Monroe, okay? And I said, let me take a guess, Seth, what, what kind of experiences you had. If I could envision your bedroom and your home when you were a, a child of two or three years old, I suspect that there were books available that mom and dad read to you, that you watched mom and dad engage in conversations about worldly events, national events, you know, work issues, that type of thing. I said, I would suspect that your room was decorated in bright colors and, and had very, various items around the walls that spurred creativity, that you may have had access to art and music materials in the home, and to which he shook his head and said, yes. I said, take that and compare that environment to the environment of some of our city systems where children may have none of that exposure prior to, prior to school. And so two children come to school at the same age, at the same time, so differently prepared for what's to follow, that the deficit is too much to overcome. So there are discussions now about universal pre-K experiences in Connecticut. I think it's years off from when we will see more widespread pre-K opportunities. But I think that what Finnish lessons is, is really saying to us is that Finland adopted a model that was very much an American model up until very recently, and that we have chosen to go down a different path with high-stakes testing and standardized curriculum and those kinds of things, and forsaking some of the broader experiences for our children and some of the social equity issues that our children may experience. So, you know, over the next couple of weeks, I would love to, next couple of board meetings, I would love to just have you maybe get up to chapter four for the next meeting, for the next time we're talking about this, and listen to your feedback from, from the book.
Yeah, I, I agree with you with, because just in the first two, they talked a lot about that socioeconomic and how they didn't have that, especially in the rural areas. And it took them a really long time to get to this model. They started it right after World War II and it was really into the seventies and eighties that it really came together. It was a long process.
Right, and I see. And, and I think that's an important point too, because you can't change things that have such deep cultural roots overnight. It's very difficult to mandate a change that is effective. This was a really a grassroots effort over, as Donna said, from, you know, post-war Finland.
So our assignment is chapters one through four by the next board meeting.
And I think you'll, you'll find it, it's a bit revolutionary and, you know, it goes against some of the things that we as a nation, as a state, as a district are doing. You know, I, I am not, I'm certainly not saying that we should not be doing the, the things that we're doing, okay? I am a firm believer in the common core. I think that we should have a certain amount of testing, okay, to check and to see, are we doing what we need to be doing? But one of the comments in, in here, I think you'll see it later on in the chapters, I think that's important, and John may be able to speak to this as well, is that at the last PISA test, or was it the NAIF? I think it was the PISA, okay? Connecticut spent some extra money and had more school districts tested than are normally allowed. And the reason for that was so that Connecticut could be treated as a separate country for the comparison purposes. So the United States as a whole would be compared and then Connecticut would be compared to all of the countries in the world that participated in the PISA testing. And, and an interesting thing happens when you do that. Connecticut jumps up as not being very good socio-economically fair, but performance jumps up almost to a par with Finland, okay? But the socioeconomic piece is slanted, so that means that we have more kids in that gap, okay? But he, he talked about how if you take Europe, if you took Europe as a whole and took their scores, they would look very much like the United States does. And, you know, but here we are in the United States. We think of us as one people, but we're 50 different states comprising a landmass probably as large or larger than the European community. So, very thought-provoking. I, I find it fascinating to read this stuff.
Alan?
Just when you're talking about preschool, it's always important to, I think, point out that, you know, the research and as well as that book, you know, makes a clear distinction between a preschool teacher being someone who's actually trained and certified and went to college for preschool as opposed to.
Babysitting.
The babysitting services that some may call themselves preschool, but they're really not. And I think that's, that's what's actually where the research on preschool comes out of, the positive effects of being with a well-trained, certified preschool teacher.
Okay, chapters one to four, next time.
All right. Everybody got that? All right, we will move on to old business and we have about five policies that are up for second review and votes. So George, would you like to?
We want to take these as a block. I'll just go through them, but we'll vote as a one block.
Sure.
Okay, so minor changes to 1321, reflecting changes in the channels for the local providers. 9121, just clarifying the role of the chairperson. 9123, again, clarifying the role of the secretary role. The one with the, the most change to it is 5114, and that aligns some, some language to state statute and cave recommendations around sponging of expulsion records based on certain criteria. And it allows the board a little bit more flexibility to expunge those, those expulsion records. And then 5114 dot 12, student handbooks, just a couple of changes around how it's distributed electronically and revised annually.
All right, do I have a motion to approve those policies, which is 1321 dot 1, 9121, 9123, 5114, and 5114 dot 12?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? So thank you. Do we have any discussion on these policies as presented? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to new business. Because of Daryl's resignation and leaving the board, we need to have a vote on a new chairperson, so I'm going to turn that over to Jim, who is going to moderate that for us.
Okay. In the past, what we have done in these circumstances is to kind of delegate to me the acceptance of nominations from the floor for the positions that are available and then to call for a motion, or I'm sorry, call for a vote on those. Once we're done with that, I will turn the meeting back over to the new chairman, okay? So at this time, I will accept nominations from the floor for chairman of the Board of Education. Jeff?
I'd like to nominate Donna Lane as chairman for the Board of Education.
Is there a second? Christine?
Thank you.
Other nominations? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Donna, first of all, Donna, are you willing?
Yes, yes, I will.
Sorry about that, I was supposed to ask that question. Okay, so all in favor? Please signify. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so moved. I will accept, because Donna's ascendancy into the chairmanship now creates a vacancy in the vice chairmanship, so I will accept nominations from the floor for the vice chairmanship.
Do we need to have that on the agenda? Because it only says chairman.
Yeah, I was wondering.
I don't think you, you can just do that unless it's on the agenda. It would have to be amended.
You can just amend the agenda.
Okay.
So that takes a motion, I believe?
Yeah, okay. Then I'll lead, I'll let Donna do that.
All right, so I have a motion that we add under new business 11. I guess we'll call it A1, which is the appointment of a Board of Education vice chair position with a vote anticipated.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor of adding that item, which is 11A1?
All right.
That motion passes, so I'll hand that back over to you so that you can.
I'll accept nominations from the floor for the position of vice chair of the Board of Education. Alan?
I'd like to nominate Lee Crouch.
Second.
Is there a second? Amy? Okay. Other nominations?
I would like to nominate George King.
Christine, George King. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff? Other nominations from the floor? Okay, we'll take them one at a time. Please, uh, those in favor of Lee Crouch, uh, being, uh, vice chairman of the Board of Education, please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails, uh, because of a tie, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of George King as vice chair, please signify by raising your All those opposed? Motion fails, and so we will have to, uh, reconvene this discussion at a later board meeting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Donna.
All right, uh, moving on to item 11B, um, John DeFour, is that how it is? Um, could not be with us tonight, um, to discuss the All-Star contract for our buses, so we are going to skip that and have that at a later meeting when he can reschedule. Um, so we are going to move on to item-
Excuse me, Mrs. Lane, can I comment on that?
Yes.
Um, I had a concern when I saw the agenda and that it was up for an initial conversation and a vote anticipated, because we've had conversations at our meetings in the past where anything with financial, um, significance to the board would be looked at at least twice.
Correct. We have a policy, right, George? That we've already passed, that we would not have a vote until the second.
Well, we haven't looked at it before.
Right, we haven't, so he's, we're gonna need to have that as a first review.
Oh, gotcha, right.
Only next time, when he comes. 'Cause we do have a policy, so we would've just taken no action this evening because of our policy, um, that we have on that. So if we can have that as just a first review next time, whenever he can come on a later meeting. All right. Um, so we will move on, if there's nothing else on that, um, to item C, which is approval of formation of a building committee for the turf field.
We have a, uh, a recommendation for the membership. Uh, Gabby, do you have that?
I do. Um, it would be a liaison from town council, a liaison from the Board of Finance, two liaisons from the Board of Ed, um, four members from the public, and it, some administration liaisons as well.
As non-voting members.
As non-voting members.
The administrators.
Right.
Gotcha.
So we- we would envision that myself, Jack, uh, Gabby, obviously, uh, John D. Gennaro, Joe Cobza would all need to be involved, so we would be a substantial, uh, addition to the committee.
All right. And you're, and you're, we're just forming it right now to move forward together, uh...
Right, in order for us to go out for a, uh, for an RFP, we have to have a building committee formed, so by, uh, voting to approve that tonight with those recommendations of the distribution of the membership, we can then contact people or take people's names that wanna be on it from the Board of Ed, for instance, uh, get the ball rolling on the formation of a committee and get the RFP out.
Mike?
I don't know if we need to have a motion before we discuss it, but I think there's two different ways we can go with the building committees. In town, in the past, it has been just Board of Ed for certain things, and for other things, it's been both the outs, the, um, people from town council and Board of Finance and Board of Ed. Since it's for turf field, which pretty much does fall just within the Board of Ed, although the town people have to vote for it, could this just be an internal Board of Ed building committee? What were the reasons behind, uh, making it the external?
I think the- the, uh, the field is- is a much broader than just the field at the high school because of the use that extends out to the community. Um, and I think that the, a lot of people will have ownership, uh, in that field. I know that the youth, uh, athletic, uh, groups, for instance, will be watching us very, very closely and participating in that. I think that because of the- the need for a bond and, uh, that, that's why we put the Board of Finance and Town Council in there to make sure that they're reporting back on a monthly basis, uh, you know, to their respective constituencies to make sure that everybody is informed, uh, so that when it does come to time for a referendum, that the word is out there.
Do you have a timeframe? How quickly you think this committee will be able to complete its charge?
It's, uh, it- it could be anywhere. This thing could happen as fast as construction in late October, okay? That would be extremely fast-tracked and not likely, okay?
That's very fast.
To completion, uh, in like July of 2016, okay? Or it could go out a whole nother year. So it varies widely. It really depends on how quickly we can turn around the feasibility study, uh, get all the- the bid documents, get the Board of Finance and Town Council on board to go to a town meeting for, uh, a bond issue and- and that kinda thing, okay? So it'll- it'll take, it'll take some time. I mean, the- the idea of going out in- in the fall of this, of next year, of this year, um, is overly optimistic. But it would be a good way to do it financially, because very few districts would be willing to split the construction over the winter. Get some work done in the fall, close this, the- the- the construction down for when the ground is frozen, reopen in the spring. What- what happens with turf fields is everybody wants it done from June 25th to August 16th with football starts, okay? And it's, because of that, the bidding is a lot more, uh, a lot less competitive.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
When we originally spoke, there were three derfs in our district that didn't have turf fields, and it's now down to two because New Milford's Town Council recently approved their addition of two turf fields. So I know October is aggressive, but the sooner the better.
I think it, I- I think it's a key thing to put somebody from Board of Finance and Town Council on, especially if we do wanna move this along, because at least then it's not new to them in six months when they're hearing it, but they're a part of the process, so they can bring that back to their respective boards.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, do I have a motion to, um, approve the formation of a building committee for the turf field?
So moved.
All right, a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Would anybody like to be on this committee? Mark, Lee, anybody else? Christine? All right. You have those names? Okay.
Gabby, did you write those down?
Okay.
Great.
Perfect. Um, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor? Perfect, motion passes. Uh, we will move on to item D, which is approval of a weather contingency plan for the 2015-16 school year.
What I would like to do is walk you through this contingency. Um, I know it's, uh, I- I apologize for having to bring it to you this evening, but worth smithing this thing and- and getting consensus on it, uh, it took some time. And, uh, if you remember, last year, we had a contingency plan, and that's all been because of some of the awful winters that we've had, uh, much like this winter, although we've been spared, uh, really of late, and we've only had six days, uh, canceled. But I think it's important to have a contingency plan. We did approve the calendar for last year, or for next year. So what- what we're proposing is to add all the additional days due to inclement weather or emergencies to the last day of school, okay? However, if by January 29th, we have six emergency closures, that we would take one of the February vacation days, that's a long weekend day, it's the Friday, long weekend, uh, we would take February 12th and make that a school day to save a day. If there are two more emergency closures between the 29th of January and February 26th, then we would make the professional development day in March a school day for students. And that if there are in excess of thirteen days before March 23rd, every additional closure would result in makeup days that occur during the spring recess, starting with the Friday, April 15th, and working back through the week. Now, why do we have to have these kinda contingency plans? Well, we are mandated by the state of Connecticut to conduct a hun, at least 180 school days, and we cannot go beyond June 30th, okay? And so, uh, although it hasn't happened, uh, of late, okay, uh, we need to plan for the, you know, that winter, or that season, or that hurricane, or that tornado, um, that brings us into a, into a problem. We're very fortunate in that we have 182 school days, so we really have two in our pocket, uh, in- in a real emergency, uh, that we could always convert to, uh, you know, we- we could basically subtract from our, from our calendar. But that's at a cost to us, because, you know, there is a per diem cost for all of the staff that would normally be employed those two days. But, um, we do have those in our pocket, uh, if it, we ever got into a dire situation. So that's the proposal. We do have the support of the, uh, of the largest union, the, uh, some districts, and that's the teachers group, uh, for this, and so, um, for your consideration.
Okay, great. Lee?
I think if this does get passed, it's imperative that there be a great communication effort so that parents understand, and nothing will come as a surprise, but that there is a plan in place to, uh, deal with a harsh winter.
Right.
Which you declared was over, so that's why-
I did declare that.
Yes, exactly.
That's a tweet.
Mark? Mark?
Would it be safe to say, then, that this can come out earlier each year, and you would just adjust the dates each year? And that way, parents could know further in advance, hey, what's it looking like?
'Cause this seems to be the same plan that essentially we approved this year for this school year.
Similar.
Yeah.
Similar. The only addition here was, uh, the- the, we try to, the April vacation is- is always an issue for both parents and staff. Uh, i- i- it's a, it's a vacation period that's, you know, in essence, held hostage, okay? Because of the, uh, the need to maybe break into it for makeup days. And so these stopgap measures are kind of, uh, measures to reduce the likelihood of having to go into the April vacation. And, you know, honestly, April vacation, in my mind, especially when you, when you only have a long weekend in February, uh, becomes a, you know, a pretty significant vacation for a lot of people, families and staff. I know that many, many, uh, families, too, are liking to book, you know, a trip to Orlando or something like that. They wanna make that commitment, but then they're hesitant because, can we lose the day? And so items two and three here are to lessen the likelihood of going into the April vacation.
Great. Do I have a motion to, um, approve the weather contingency plan?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, motion passes, thank you so much. We will move on to item E, curriculum proposals, and this is a first review, so I'd ask our instructional leaders for both mathematics and, uh, language arts to please come up in case there is any questions and any discussion that you wanna have on these items that you haven't already talked about. All right, great, I guess we will start with eighth grade mathematics, which is the Fundamentals of Algebra book that went around previously. Mr. West, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention briefly, this is a continuation we started two years ago when we brought in the, uh, the Big Ideas Math in sixth grade. So presently, we have the Big Ideas Math in sixth, Big Ideas Math for the pre-algebra class in seventh, and then this one would go, take over the present resource for Fundamentals of Algebra in the eighth grade class. Uh, in eighth grade, students have an opportunity to either take Fundamentals, Algebra I, or Geometry class, so this one would be for the Fundamentals class, um, which is the eighth grade, uh, Common Core Standards-based, uh, class. It is one that teachers, it really liked the- the sixth and seventh grade book, they liked the inquiry-based instruction, they liked the online, uh, you know, teacher's guide, assessments, there is intervention piece, there is an enrichment piece, uh, the parents have access to it, um, at home. There are, um, so it's got a lot of other things that go along with the textbook, um, to help with the- the course. Um, so I, it's one that, that they also like the consistency. When I was speaking to the seventh grade teachers who, um, inherited the sixth grade students who used the Big Ideas in sixth grade, they're, they're familiar with the strategies, they're familiar with the textbook, the way it's set up, they're familiar with the other, uh, the other things that come along with the textbook, and they feel it was like a seamless transition to seventh grade. So now this group, you know, majority of them are going into the Algebra way, a lot of them also are going into this to also have that seamless transition to eighth grade for these group of kids. I think it'd be very beneficial for the, for the course.
Anybody have any questions on it? All right. Mr. Qualley, do you have anything else that you wanna add to yours, or you've covered it?
I think, I think the, the initiative here, if I could just make one comment about the efforts that Mike has been spearheading here at the high school, uh, I think the initiative to reduce, uh, the number of, uh, of levels in courses is a, is an outstanding one, and I, it's not easy sometimes to make those kinds of changes in a high school environment. But I think it is so important to do that, because I feel that when you raise the bar for kids, uh, kids respond in an appropriate fashion, and I think that's what we're doing with our English classes, uh, at the high school, so thank you, Mike, for your leadership there.
I know, they sound very interesting. I know personally, I'd like to be in the war literature one.
Stop, uh.
Anybody have any questions? All right, hearing none, I think we're all set, then. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Does, anybody have anything else before we move on to adjournment? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, um, all in favor? Perfect, thank you so much, everybody.